Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday, March 24th. Agenda here on the Hilton Head Island Workshop. And our guest speaker this morning is going to be Sean. You're going to lead us through this process. Go on. Go on the left already. Where is Sean?
There he is.
And there is Sean. Sean, you ready? Sean, you ready?
Yes, sir. Sorry, I couldn't find the mute button.
Mark's going to say a few words before we turn it over to you, Sean.
Okay.
Mark, good morning, everybody. Good morning, Mayor, Council, all the staff. Happy to be here talking about the Gateway Corridor Project. Really, before Sean jumps in, I just want to make everybody aware. On March 22nd, a couple of days ago, I had the pleasure of sitting with Mayor and Mr. Ames, Councilman Ames, and also the Hilton Head Island Representation on the Independent Engineering Oversight Committee. We overviewed the work to date, the outstanding questions from all of you as a council, from staff, and from the committee itself. We talked a little bit about the DOT project schedule. And then, really, we also discussed the Oversight Committee's Hilton Head Island Representation on the Oversight Committee, their March 9th letter to HDR. So there's a letter that the Oversight Committee sent to HDR asking three main questions. Sean will overview those today, but I want to let you know that I had a pleasure of meeting with those folks, and we had some good conversation. And we're prepared to continue to meet with them as much as needed and as often as possible. I think you're going to hear some news today from Sean where there's some good traction from our end, there's some good traction from DOT's end, and just really working on this project together to get it to a point where we're all proud of it and that we all trust the answers from DOT. So with that, Sean, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say thanks to Mark for trusting me with this project going forward. I'll take the lead to coordinate along with the staff team and then coordinate with the external agencies to make sure that we're doing the best we can to meet your expectations. I say all the time, there's a lot of horsepower here at the town. And just so you know, we've got Darren on the call to handle any traffic, transportation, NEPA process, and anything for the Oversight Committee because he serves on that committee. We've got Jennifer on the call to be able to handle any questions that pop up related to the land planning consultant and that team effort. Obviously, we have Mark and Josh, Angie, and Jeff Buckle who are also on the call. So I'm just kind of, I'm the lead on this. And I'm going to walk through some key points, but I want to let you know the whole team is dedicated and working on this project. I'm going to cover some key points. I'm doing hopefully a brief presentation. I don't think you really want to hear a presentation too much for me, but I'm going to give you the key points that have occurred. I'm going to do a summary of the March 10th workshop so everyone understands what was conducted there and what the strategic direction was coming out of that meeting. I'm going to cover the steps taken since the March 10th meeting. As Mark mentioned, there's been a lot of good traction that we've made since that date, including getting input from Town Council, activities moving toward securing a land planning team engagement, the HDR effort that's being jointly done between the town and the county under the Independent Engineering Review Oversight Committee, meetings with the Hilton Head Island delegation of that committee, and also some discussions with DOT. And I'll have updates on information, clarification of schedule, and the key steps going forward. We'll include a latest timeline with activities that we anticipate coming up here. And I think it's important that at the end of this that we capture any additional comments or input from Town Council, as has been iterated along the way. That's going to be critical, the more specific and detailed we can be. And any request for information, any questions that you have, the better off we'll be to meet your expectations in developing some community solutions. So I'm going to go ahead and share my screen unless there are any questions at this time. Okay. Just want to make sure you can see the presentation.
Yep, it's on there, Sean.
Okay. I'm just trying to find where I were. Well, I can no longer see you, but I'll go through this presentation. There you have it. Okay. So I'll briefly cover just an overview of what happened on March 10th. That was another workshop with Town Council. I think it was very productive. But at that workshop, we heard a presentation from SCDOT. They provided an update on the US 278 Gateway Corridor Project. They provided an update on their timeline, where they were in the process. And Council had questions for them that we've documented. There was a presentation from HDR, the consultant doing the joint work between the town and the county for the Independent Engineering Oversight work. They provided an update, a status report to Town Council, and they answered questions at that meeting as well. And then the third element that was part of that workshop was a report from staff. Jennifer provided an update on where we were with the work to engage a land planning consultant here locally to help evaluate and enhance the project as we move forward. And so there were three presentations that were provided at that workshop. The strategic direction that sort of came out of that workshop were some key items. One was, we needed to summarize input from Town Council so that we could clearly understand what your expectations are, what they are going forward, and use that as the foundation for decision-making and outlining the work program that we will have with our consultants, with all these outside agencies and staff teams, that we can address those concerns. There's a push toward developing community-based solutions in that meeting, and I appreciate that. Another action item or strategic direction was to expedite the selection of a land planning team here locally. And so staff has been working on that and have an update here in just a minute. Also, to work with all the outside agencies to seek input from the Oversight Committee. And because one or more of these agencies or groups are going to be required to answer the questions or do the deep thinking to address concerns or questions that Council has presented to date and any that we have going forward. Also, to engage a land planning team with both, well, Town Council with DOT and HDR so that we're working, kind of rolling in the same direction with all these efforts, and to kind of solidify or unify the effort between now and before we get to any kind of final decision-making period. And then also to get some clarification from SCDOT on the schedule. They had programmed a, they were targeting a May 20th public hearing. There were some questions about the public hearing process, the period, what happens at the public hearing, after the public hearing. And so we've been able to reach out and get clarification and details on the next steps. That's a summary of what happened on March 10th, including the strategic direction that we were able to distill and take forward out of that meeting to help us with our action items from that point forward. All right, so. And Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to take questions along the way. I'm happy to go through everything and then take questions at the end or members of the team, if that works.
Whatever you want to do, Sean.
If someone has a question, I'd like to address it as we go. But I'll, you look really small on the screen right now. So just butt in if needed. Okay, so. That strategic direction helped us identify some action items that we needed to take before coming back to you with information. Some of it was homework on part of Town Council, trying to capture the input, the questions, the concerns, the ideas, the opportunities that you saw with this project. And we've captured that. There was a very robust response from Town Council. And we've captured that. I'll go into a little bit of detail in a minute. The town has selected MKSK, a planning firm that got a strong land planning and transportation background. They've been selected as our consultant and will lead the team there. We anticipate a scoping and kickoff meeting with them next week. And so this is moving forward as quickly as we can make it move forward. As Mark mentioned, the Mayor and Town Manager, David Ames, was part of the meeting. And staff met with the Hilton Head members of the Oversight Committee to get a better understanding where they saw the effort with HDR going, their thoughts related to the project. And it was a very productive meeting to gain insights on where they feel we are in the process and the key items that need to be addressed going forward. And I'll cover a little more detail in just a minute. And then again, seek some clarification on the timeline and details from SCDOT about the public hearing process, about revisions after the preferred alternative is selected, and the inputs that could be provided to help influence before a final decision is made. And so we took those, those are action items. Those are steps that we've taken since March 10th. And I'll go into detail on each one of these items as we move forward. Okay. I do not mean to do a disservice to Town Council, but we had about three pages of key points, questions, concerns. I've captured seven of those on this slide, but know that everyone's input has been captured and is part of, will be part of the discussion, will be part of information seeking as we move forward. But these are some key points. One was that Council needs to agree on the task our consultant will need to complete to meet your expectations. And ultimately, you know, the design that you expect as well going forward. There was sort of uniform consensus that this project needs to understand the impacts, not just to and through the Jenkins Island stony area, but the impacts to the entire community. Also considering aesthetics and other things that are important to not just residents and visitors, but to the entire community. There's more than just residents and visitors that come through that corridor, there's a workforce and other guests. So look for transportation improvements that improve safety and quality of life for all residents, workers, and visitors. There was a key point here to make sure that we still recognize and understand the adopted guiding principles that were generated out of the, excuse me, out of the 278 corridor task force and adopted by Council. Need to understand the chain reaction that happens with the improvements that are being proposed throughout the corridor, whether they're road improvements, intersection improvements, or others. But what are those chain reaction impacts that would happen outside of the scope of the project in areas beyond the limits of the project and island-wide? Get back to that community-based solution, not just a corridor-based solution. Another key point was to slow the process down so that we can have time to have these concerns considered or evaluated and questions answered. And we'll have a little bit more on that in a minute. A request for DOT to clearly communicate their timeline and to be able to respond to questions that you have going forward. Again, there's a lot more on the list from Town Council. These are some key points. And I believe you have the benefit of receiving the entire listed input from the collective Town Council body. The next action item was again to expedite the selection of a land planning team. I mentioned that we've selected MKSK. And I believe there's representatives on the call today listening in. They have a strong land planning and transportation background. They've worked here locally in the region, but they've got a worldwide footprint. Their team includes land planning, transportation. They also have a market and economic consultant as a component to this. That was, there were some of the comments from Council that thought that that was important. And so we have that capability. We want to make sure that we've got the disciplines needed to meet your expectations and to address all comments and concerns and facets of this project as we move forward. You know, the basic scope of work is they will develop a corridor, a corridor plan, development scenarios, looking at public spaces and visualization, impacts of roadway options and intersections and kind of how it all blends together. We will put them in touch with HDR. We will work to engage with HDR and SCDOT to inform our local consultants here to help generate the best product that we can as far as corridor plan. We anticipate some sort of rapid movement towards meetings with MKSK. Again, a kickoff scoping meeting maybe early to mid next week. And then plan to get the other agencies together to provide input and work together as best we can moving forward. So that includes HDR, SCDOT, and also meetings with Town Council as we advance. We would target some meetings with Town Council before SCDOT meetings and any kind of public hearing that SCDOT will schedule here. As mentioned by the Town Manager, the Hilton Head Island and Jenkins Island members of the Oversight Committee, the Independent Review Oversight Committee, had submitted a letter on March 9th to Town Council and County Council. It was a summary of status and where they believed the efforts with HDR, the consultant working for the town. The status of where that effort was, what their, what their thoughts were. They were very candid in the good work that HDR had done, but also some additional work that they believed is necessary to be completed before a final report can be generated by HDR. They distilled it down to three essential questions that still need to be answered before that final report from HDR is complete in their mind. And I've got these questions here. I'll read through them for the benefit of anyone listening out there. But, and the intent here is that HDR or SCDOT could or should address these before a final report is complete. If HDR is unable to address these, I know SCDOT plans to review and respond to the HDR report. And so between those two agencies, they, I think they can handle answering most of these, hopefully all of these questions. But number one, how will the preferred solutions reduce congestion over the current situation? What measurement criteria are appropriate to quantify congestion? And what is the forecasted congestion reduction? So that's essential question number one. Number two, will the preferred solutions increase safety for residents, motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists over the current situation? What measurement criteria are appropriate to quantify safety? What is the forecasted safety improvement? And then number three, how will the preferred solution impact residents and the environment over the current situation? Recognizing the community impact includes those properties immediately adjacent to 278 and a change of traffic volumes on the connecting roadways. This impact needs to be forecasted and quantified. What is the mitigation proposal for each alternative? How do you determine that any negative impacts have been satisfactorily mitigated? So that's, there's an awful lot. It's three questions, but some questions within a question there. But those are three questions that the Hilton Head Jenkins Island members of the Oversight Committee had drafted as part of that letter and are questions that they would like HDR or SCDOT to answer before sort of the body of work for a report is complete. And so it gets back to, how are you going to address congestion? How are you going to address safety? And how are you going to evaluate total, like, community impact? So it's kind of boils down to those three key elements. I will say that the Oversight Committee, their comments that we heard on Monday were more positive in their mind after the last meeting that they had with the Oversight Committee and HDR. And so I believe that there's movement, there's traction being made to meet their expectations and to get these, get a lot of these answers that they've requested. Okay, the next thing was clarification on schedule and next steps from DOT. So first thing, on the SCDOT website for this 278 corridor project, they've got this listed, what you see in front of you on the screen. This is the anticipated NEPA schedule for the project. And hopefully you can see my mouse here, but it's down, we're near the bottom of the page. But right now, they are developing the preferred alternative, preparing the EA, the environmental assessment. And they are, they were trying to work through logistics to set up a May 20th public hearing. That date is changed, and I'll share it with you in just a minute. But this is the process, this is the area of work that they are in right now. Developing the EA, developing their preferred alternative, and then trying to schedule the public hearing. As far as next steps, I'm going to have Darren jump in here in just a minute for some clarification around what it means when the preferred alternative is announced, what it means during the public hearing, and what it means by a revision period after the public hearing. But for next steps, first, DOT is listening to our local concerns. They understand that a May 20th timeframe for a public hearing is probably restricting our ability to get meaningful input and answers from the Oversight Committee, the report from HDR, the questions that have come from Town Council and others. And so I talked with Craig Wynn with DOT yesterday, and they're pushing, right now their plan is to push the public hearing to July, from May to July. They did mention it takes about two months of time logistics to get a public hearing in place, selecting a location, all the materials that they need to develop. But they're, right now they're moving it from May to July. That's the anticipated timeframe for the public hearing. One of the reasons is HDR is likely to deliver their report to the Oversight Committee and then deliver the report to each County Council and Town Council here early to mid-April. And SCDOT wants to have the benefit of that report. They want to have time to review it and be able to respond to that. And so they were, they were here in the Low Country on Monday talking with county officials and then shared with me yesterday that what they'd like to do is target a joint meeting with Town and County Council members for mid-May to go over their review and response to HDR report. And so certainly to target mid-May, it did not make sense to have a public hearing on May 20th. And so they pushed their schedule back to accommodate that. Some clarification related to the public hearing. So the public hearing, if it were to have been on May 20th, the processes, they notice that public hearing and make available all materials 15 days in advance of the date of the public hearing. They begin accepting public comments 15 days in advance of that hearing. And they accept comments for 30 days after the date of the public hearing. So it's basically a 45-day comment period and 45 days where you can have open access to the materials, not just on the public hearing day. So I just want to make sure that that detail is shared and understood at this meeting. According to the NEPA process, there can be revisions made to the preferred alternative that take into account input from the public comment period and at the public hearing. And I'm going to ask Darren to jump in and share his information at this time regarding those components.
Thank you, Sean. Yes, I feel that the, strongly that the various reasonable alternatives that are being assessed and evaluated by the department and by HDR. The intent there is to identify the optimal preliminary design. And there has been some concern expressed that when that decision is made, the window for revisions in response to public comment and the concerns of the town will have closed. And we do not anticipate that that will be the case. The public hearing will be to basically follow up on the release of the preferred alternative. And in the months following that, we expect to continue to work with the department to address community concerns, concerns of the town, to tweak the selected design and make further improvements to it, to improve the product. If revisions can be made at a certain location, can we close the median at this location? Eliminate this turn? Revis the access to provide alternate access in that regard? Certainly expect that those improvements will continue to be made by the department in response to the receipt of the concerns of the town and the community. And that we will continue to improve the design and to address these concerns.
Thanks, Darren. I hope that's helpful to understand that what's released as part of the public hearing as the preferred alternative is not necessarily the final. It's not set in stone. DOT said that they regularly revise or tweak or enhance the preferred alternative. They mentioned that it takes usually between two to three months after the public hearing for them to work through that, the comments. They need to address all the comments that come in during that public hearing period. They evaluate all of them. They take them into consideration. And it's a two- or three-month process to then revise the preferred alternative before they seek any kind of approval of the preferred alternative at that point. And then I'm going to end before we open up for questions and for discussion. So looking at this latest timeline, we have the workshop today. Hopefully, we gain some more of your thoughts, any questions or comments that you have. Because we are actively engaged at all levels now, the land planning firm, with Oversight Committee, with HDR, with SCDOT, to get answers to questions and have additional things evaluated. We anticipate a kickoff. We anticipate a kickoff meeting again next week, scoping a kickoff with MKSK, our land planning team. We anticipate meetings with MKSK and HDR and, and Town Council and other players through April. We may have the benefit of having slightly more time now with this public hearing pushback, but we're going to keep optimal speed ahead and to move forward as quickly as we can. We anticipate the HDR report will be submitted to the committee and then council, both councils, early April, early to mid-April. And then that SCDOT review and response and potential joint meeting that they're targeting in mid-May. And so you have the benefit of that meeting six to eight weeks ahead of what they're targeting out for a public hearing. Again, that meeting is now target, being targeted for July. We plan to update our landing page for the project on our own webpage. And we will work to help develop a communication strategy that enhances the DOT communication strategy, especially as it relates to the public hearing and the dissemination of information. But we're also going to have our own communication strategy to inform our citizenry about the, the steps taken between now and the end of this review period. That sort of completes the, the presentation. Again, I didn't really want to give a presentation, I had more of a discussion. But I thought it was, it was critical to understand where we are from the March 10th meeting, what's been done, what we plan to do going forward. And you understand the timeframe and details for all the different components that are, are now in the mix.
Do you want to field their questions?
Yeah.
Can I say a couple of things?
You shake up words.
All right.
Well, I'll just jump in here. Sean, thank you for the wonderful summary. That's very helpful. And I'm not sure if you sent that out to Town Council, that presentation, but perhaps post-meeting Krista can distribute that to everybody. I want to summarize real quick because I want Town Council and I want staff to hear that, you know, we do have a real sense of urgency here. So in the last two weeks since the last workshop Sean alluded to, we heard from Council, we have thorough comments and thorough direction. We communicated this internally to HDR, to DOT and soon to be MKSK. We met with the Hilton Head Island Representation on the Engineering Oversight Committee. We clearly understood the content of their 3-9 letter, their March 9 letter to HDR. We hired MKSK, John went over that. And we hired MKSK to work with us, to work with you Town Council, to work with HDR and eventually the team of HDR and MKSK and Town to collect those thoughts and continue to work with DOT. We had wonderful conversations with DOT. So I want to make sure I say that. DOT came here a couple of days after your public workshop to let us know they're hearing, they're listening, they met with Josh. I think it was an impromptu meeting, they, but they traveled from Columbia and from wherever all those folks are from. And several of them, several of those, those folks came and led by Craig, led by Craig. And we clearly started and I think continued to explain our concerns to date and to identify opportunities to collectively present the right design solutions. And Council, I want you to know from me, we have a clear path forward and will continue to work with you, continue to work with the Oversight Committee and help shape the roadway project as we will know it. I think the right team is assembled. Your comments have helped me tremendously. And I've heard comments from all of you and they're somewhat the same and somewhat different. It's trying to make sense of all of those. And I don't think we're going to make sense of them until we sit down and truly start understanding beyond the philosophies and beyond the goals of the project, the real design implications and the real impacts to the community and also the real opportunity to improve the community. So I think there's opportunity there. What, what I feel good about is I'm hearing from you, I think I'm understanding it all. We've met with the committee and, and I really appreciate Sean standing up and saying, in, in light of the folks that were helping lead this project internally, he's going to put this on his shoulders and he's going to be our leader on this project. So I really appreciate that. And I appreciate all the comments from Town Council that help me know which way to go. Thank you.
Questions from members of the Council? Mr. Stanford?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I really do appreciate the feeling of assumed organization and responsibility that's been developed here as these actions. It gives me a lot of comfort to know that the town is really fully engaged in this project, which is clearly vital for our citizens. And I have a couple of kind of specific questions. One, is there some sort of drop dead date when a decision on this project must be yes or no? What I'm getting at is does some time limit expire having to do with funding, having to do with the environmental assessment, having to do with whatever details are going on here?
I can answer that. There, there must be. We don't know that answer yet. One of my next steps that I've, that I've written down is, well, we respect and understand DOT's schedule. We need to prepare for you all and for us an internal schedule, right? The, the high-level DOT schedule really is our driver. But internally, when is Council at the table? When are those decisions needing, needed to be made? Let us work on that. And we can't figure that out without working closely with DOT. So that's going to be in concert with their overall schedule. So we will get back to you, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. That, that's, that's sufficient for now. Then I've got a question about what is the eastern end of the scope of the project? We have all heard that it goes only to Spanish Wells. Lately I've been hearing that, no, no, it goes on to make a connection to the Cross Island. What's the answer on that?
I don't think Glenn, there is an answer. I think people are still talking about it. I don't think there's been any great, mark or any ground, Glenn, that's what the real answer is. You agree with me?
Well, that's a concern to me because my understanding is that DOT can only extend the project through the extent of the range of the environmental assessment. That is the geographic range of the environmental assessment. And I want to make sure that that work's being done because to me it's vital that this project in fact have a professionally thought out and designed connection to the Cross Island as well as to the business side of 278. So we need to have an understanding of that and a clarification so that we can decide how we want to move forward. Then Sean, I think I heard you say a minute ago, thank you for your report, by the way. I think I heard you say a minute ago that we would get a preliminary notice of what the preferred alternative would be. Is that correct?
When the, when the DOT announces their public hearing, they make all materials available 15 days in advance of that hearing. We will push to get information, as, as Mark has mentioned, related to anything related to the preferred alternative, the routing impacts as soon as possible. And, and what we would like to do is schedule meetings with Town Council and SCDOT as soon as we can, as soon as the information can be shared. So you have the benefit, enough time in advance of the public hearing to have that information.
Thank you. It seems to me that the, the answers to this question could be kind of backed into, if you will. That is, we have ruled out alternative 4B. We have ruled out alternative 3 and so forth so that we know that certain things don't have to be considered moving forward. So I'm sure, well, I hope that DOT can share that type of information with us. And I hope, I know that it would be very helpful. Has there been further discussion that all of us have seen about the possibility of a great separated intersection at Spanish Wells and Old Warhorse, Old Warhorse? Thank you. Darren, I see you shaking your head.
Yes, we are discussing options for that intersection with, with HDR as part of our work with them through, via the Oversight Committee.
Thank you. I think that that could be a vital piece of relieving the pressure on this overall corridor coming in. Final question from me is, Mark, I think you have worked with this consultant MKSK in the past, have you not?
They have been hired for a comprehensive plan in, in Bluffton. Yes, sir.
And what was that experience?
It's a great experience so far. You know, they're, they're, they're still out there working on it, so.
All right, good. John, I think those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And many thanks to, to Mark and his team for pulling together as Councilman Stanford has, has mentioned in a very organized way. I've always, always viewed this project as the town and the county being the client. And, you know, SCDOT needs to be responding particularly since it's our money, right? In some form or fashion. So I appreciate us getting into a more proactive role versus reactive role. And I'd like us to continue in that fashion. I've got a few things here, but they're not necessarily questions, just comments that I'd like to note. I appreciate the fact that the guiding principles have been mentioned again. You know, ultimately I think they are a metric that's going to be important to us at the outset here. The, the schedule that Sean has proposed, you know, it, it's talking a lot about communication with the town and SCDOT, town and the land planner. I'm encouraging us that there's also equal opportunity for the land planner to engage with the community. I know that's challenging in these times because of the pandemic, but it's crucial for us to get input, buy-in, so to speak, so that there's a level of comfort within the community also that we may be sharing as, as Council here. And the other part about the land planner, I guess I'm not totally sure how that effort is going to affect SCDOT's changes to their plan. That's not really spelled out in what we have here. I'd like to, I'd like to see that a little bit more definitive because that, that's a, that's a very, very important piece of what we're doing. And I think at the end of the day, for the product to be one that we are proud of, that needs to be coordinated to some degree. The, the whole SCDOT during the public hearing and then they have a stint of time, I think you said two to three months, to receive public comment. I would like to see some firm dates where the council has an opportunity to react. I remember from the original public hearing, a lot of the information that was pushed into SCDOT's Dropbox, so to speak, council did not necessarily have, or the community did not necessarily have the opportunity to review or react or respond. And I think that's critical along the way. I guess what I'm saying is I don't want the public hearing in the two to three month period to go on. And then three months later is our opportunity as representatives to, to comment and respond. And the, the last thing, I can appreciate SCDOT giving a response to HDR's report. The questions that the committee still has outstanding, I think are very good questions, very vital information for us to have. I, I'd just like to have us as a council and as a community, the opportunity to, I guess, respond to their response, so to speak, okay? I think that's important along the way. That concludes my, my comments. Again, I, I offer up much gratitude for us, you know, standing up on this one. And Mark, you've developed a great team to, to move us forward in this.
Thank you, Alex. David?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to make some comments. I'm not sure how organized they are, but let me begin by again reiterating what's already been said. Mark, I truly appreciate your stepping up and saying to all of us, it's time to focus on expediting actions and solutions. So thank you on that. Sean, good, good report. I'll, I'll try to distill my thoughts, but I'm still trying to adjust to the new paradigm that Mark has created for us and our benefit. On the one hand, I'm, I think it's time for Council to speak in one voice to represent the, in, in all of the conversations with, with consultants and SCDOT island values and expectations. And I don't think we've done that yet. But I, I have this uncomfortable feeling that is that even a waste of time? So let me speak to where I am. I think there is an opportunity for Council and staff to step up and say what we expect the gateway experience will be when this is done. What is the experience driving onto the island, across the causeways, over the bridge, over Jenkins Island, through Stony? What does that feel like? What, i- is it memorable? What can we do today to say to SCDOT, these are important goals for this community? So I think the, the idea of a dual roadway through Jenkins Island so that we can control the width of pavement and the landscaping much more impactfully than if we had simply seven or eight lanes of asphalt running through the current road right of way. But I think that's number one. Number two is, and I, I look at this project as a, as a tug of war between polarities. And one of those is, is it a resident first issue? Or is it a tourist commuter first issue? And clearly it's neither. But, but we have a situation where we recognize that it's getting more and more difficult to retain workers on the island so that the time it takes for them to get onto the island is a factor in our ability to attract workers in the future. Our brand for tourism and guests has to do in some ways and ser, in, in significant ways on certain Saturdays, how long it takes simply to get to the island. So from my standpoint, it's the, the two hours in the morning and the two hours in the afternoon are important timeframes for us to solve the issues of commuter traffic or on Saturdays, resort guest traffic. And where I'm coming out in that is that we ought to have a no left turn policy during those rush hours, only those rush hours. So that they, the inconvenience factor is placed on residents during those hours and the convenience factor is, is given to the commuters. However, for 20 hours of the day, the resident first priority is given. So I think there, there's that issue that has to be wrestled to the ground. We as Council need to come to grips with how we're going to handle this distinct difference between what residents want and what commuters. want and what commuters, in my opinion, deserve. Then the, 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 the other issue that I think we need to think about is the retention of ownership for Stony residents. I mean, if, if you think about what they've gone through over the last 40 or 50 years, is this nibbling effect at their property. And so I think if this, if us, if council could say, you know, it is our priority that we're going to have a design solution that doesn't take more land from the Stony area. I'm acknowledging that there's going to have to be an expansion of pavement through Jenkins Island and so on. But let the Stony residents retain their land. So I, I think that those are the kinds of things that I'd like council to stand up and with staff's help, say, these are our expectations of the final design solution. There, there are others, sort of open issues and needed information that I'd like to express. I don't know what the Stony pedestrian 278 crossing is going to be. I don't have a clue how you connect the two sides of the road. And I think that's an important issue for us as council to understand. Secondly, I don't know what impact we might have on the bridge design from an aesthetic standpoint, but I think there's an opportunity there for Hilton Head to make a statement. And we ought to be asking our consultants, HDR and MKS, to think about that. You know, what might we do to create not only an environmental statement, but a physical statement as well? I, I, I think we need to state that there'd be a uniform and intense landscape plan coming off the bridge and through Stony, and that that is something that SC DOT understands is important to us and that our consultants are working towards that. I, I also think that it would be very helpful for us to make decisions if we had better information, more granular information about where population growth is going to come from and our traffic patterns. I'm not sure how much that's going to impact our decisions today, but certainly, population growth by geography, by group, and then impacts on traffic during the day, what day of the week is going to be important. And I, I don't think we have that at this point. And then finally, I don't think our community has made a statement that we are planning our infrastructure to accommodate this many people on the island. And unless we acknowledge a limitation of our infrastructure, at some point, our brand is going to be decimated. And so I think that we as council have to connect our decisions today on roadway capacity with our land use and zoning. Mayor, thank you very much. I hope that my comments aren't a waste of time and that council can begin to speak with one voice so that residents are confident that we're pushing this in a direction that they'll be pleased with. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Kenny?
Well, the first thing I want to take a moment to say is that, Sean, that was a great presentation or opening statement to a discussion. The items that you were able to pull and to coordinate, condense so concise, concisely with regard to what you heard from the rest of the town council was very on mark. And I think specific, I think it provides a lot of guidance for what you and the team are putting together now. Mark, I just want to compliment you. I think that we now are at a place where we are organized. People's thoughts, ideas are being expressed and heard. I feel more confident that we are in the driver's seat, that the right parties are involved, the proper disciplines are engaged. And for me, who has had very little confidence in this project, or hope that we would get to a place that we've all stated publicly, we want to be proud of, I feel now more than ever that we're on that track. So that doesn't mean that I necessarily endorse having as much traffic and pavement as we had seen previously coming into this at this point, but I do have hope and confidence that we're leading if, to a place where if that happens, we are going to get what it is truly something we can be proud of. I want to just reiterate something, and I think all the comment, comments you've heard thus far are ones that I think you heard in our writings. I, I know you've brought them forward and will bring them to the proper groups. But I just want to reiterate some of the things that I heard and that I've stated before. One of the critical elements for me throughout this is A, making sure that we've identified a true need, where that true need exists. I think David pointed out those couple of hours and some thoughtful ideas with regard to that. Overall, there has to be a discussion that comes from council. That speaks to look over, there's a lot of feedback. I'm not sure where it's coming from. It's, it's, that we have, that we are stopping and looking at our overall thoughts for today and for the future with regard to the capacity of the island, what we can manage realistically, how we can maintain the quality of life for all of our residents, and also maintain that quality of experience for all of our visitors. It's not, it's not an open-ended, as many people as wants to come, we can fit. We're a small island. And we already have acknowledged we're running out of the space to be able to, to manage that in a way that maintains those qualities for everyone coming. So I think I've droned on about this every time. And I think everyone knows from my writings and for what I've said, my priorities. And so I'm happy to hear where we're heading. Thank you both. Thank you, Mayor, for helping to put all this together. And I'm looking forward to being kept in the loop, knowing that every day, each step has been thought through thoughtfully with intention, and that it's being vetted in the best interest of what we're all discussing now. That's all really I have to say. I have confidence. Thank you.
Thomas?
I thought you were going to forget me. Thank you, Mark, for your leadership on this and for elevating it as a priority. And Sean, I think you covered all the things and key points that needed to be covered. And I've got a lot of confidence in the process right now. I have no questions. I, I would echo what Mark said. And I have confidence in the fact that we do have a clear path forward and are properly and effectively engaging the state, HDR, MKSK, and the work of the oversight community. We put that oversight community, committee together to represent the community. And I think they're doing a very effective job in doing just that. So I have confidence in the process, and I think we're talking with all the right people. And it's clear to me that the town has emerged as a leader in all the work that's going to be done.
Thank you, Tom. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two general categories of comment. One is in terms of the process. Sean, excellent overview. Really appreciated that. And what that tells me is we have a sharpened focus, very, very important. We have defined leadership and accountability within the organization. I think that's refreshing. I was very happy to hear that we're, we have a positive receptive working relationship with the state. That is very, very important. And underlying all this is the, and recognition that time is not our friend with this project. We do have a sense of urgency. At the same time, we want to do it correctly. My good piggyback in some, on some of the particulars and drawing, I think, directly or indirectly from Glenn's comment, you know, just like in the world of physics, every action has a reaction. And I was heartened to see in the listing of comments that we have to look at what we're thinking about doing in a holistic way. The words used to define that was chain reaction. So that leads to scope. The chain reaction of whatever we do here is going to have, could have multiple impacts. For us not to know what the chain reaction or the impacts are going to be with the Cross Island and with Gum Street, Gum Tree, would be a shame. So my encouragement is for the consultants that are listening, in terms of their scope of activity, they look at the chain reaction to those two areas, not to minimize the importance of others. Also tagging on some of the comments that Mr. Ames is making here, this is, this is our entry point to the community. This is our, when people come over the bridge, we want them to be psychologically refreshed. We want them to be excited. We want them to feel they're in a different place, a very good place. So what we do with that corridor in terms of landscaping and development, and how we can do that in a sensitive way for the people that live there, for our friends in Jenkins Island and Stony, is very, very important. So this is more than a roadway. This is a community development project. Thank you.
Sean, I'm very pleased that you're going to be the one that's leading the project. You have both the institutional knowledge here and, you know, and the drive to get us where we need to be. David mentioned one thing today that we, we don't talk about enough. What is the capacity of this island? What is the capacity for our roads? What is the capacity for all the services both government provides and the public service perfect, the public provides? We have to get more into that conversation of capacity. And we just can't make this the open thing for the chamber to get more and more people, trust to build more and more houses, when sooner or later, we're not going to be able to service them at all. So capacity is a big project going forward. And with that, the airport is having a, a meeting tomorrow morning, a press conference tomorrow morning. And I'm sure that press conference is going to be built around new trap, new, new flights coming in and out of here, okay? And that also hinges on our, our capacity too. The capacity is very timely now with the bridge, with building of new houses, building of new apartments, with new traffic coming in and out of here. We're at the crossroads now. How much further can we go and still sustain the light that we have here along the way? Now light goes from the north end to the south end of the island. So I'd like to bring that subject forward in the very, very near future, that we talk more about the capacity of this island.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I tag along in that. In terms of capacity, this may be somewhat of a, a non sequitur, but we have a developing application on the island for more density on Marshland Road. That's a capacity question. And I think we have to, as we look at new projects coming forward, we have to look certainly in the highest and best use of land. We also have to look at them in terms of, as the mayor is saying, as David is saying, capacity. You know, if we upzone something for higher capacity, we, we generate more income for the town, but do we also generate more problems? So I think this subject is very timely and it's very connected. Thank you.
Do you have any more to close with? No, sir. I just really appreciate everybody's comments and, and confidence. And stay tuned. We, we've got to really refine an internal project schedule. I think that's what you're going to hear from us next. One of the questions today was, you know, really, my words summarized, you know, how do we get there? Is MKSK going to work with DOT or HDR? I really think this is a team effort moving forward. We've got to really understand what isn't on the table as an option. And we know it really need to refine what is on the table. And the sooner we get the team together, so to speak, after today, the better. So thank you.
Okay, I should do a roll call now to end the meeting, shouldn't I? You're going to miss the first two minutes along the way. Okay. Motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Okay, have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mayor McCann?
Here.
Mr. Harkins?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Ames?
Here.
Mrs. Becker?
Yes, here.
Mr. Lennox?
Here.
Mr. Stanford?
I've been here.
Thank you all, everybody. I'll talk to you soon. Have a good day.